God, I pray first of all for all the leaders of our community. God, I pray your blessing upon them for their willingness to serve as well as their families. God, we thank you. God, that we have leaders that lead us with integrity and God, we appreciate that. Lord, we just pray for tonight, God. We pray that you'd bless everything that goes on. Pray that you would give wisdom and insight, God, to those that need it. God, as we discuss the things that are on the agenda for tonight, God, pray that you'd bless everything that goes on. God, may you be honored. We give you praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any discussion? Any discussion on the presentation? All of the same side. Any previous business who want to do business? Under the business, we have the administrative administrator, deputy city administrator. As we had discussed previously, we have a deputy administrator and we look at maybe give you titles, the administrative administrator right now has titles back to the administrator. Was that deputy administrator position open? So we put that title to the service. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
There's nothing specified. It would usually be some sort of reasonable time. I've seen, you know, especially here sometimes. Depending on what it takes to find out.
So I think we need, Joe, we need separate motions.
You can do it all in the same motion.
Okay. All of the different motions to make any administrative administrator and (inaudible). All of the (inaudible). Any discussion on that too? Any discussion on the presentation? All of the same side. Either this one or new business will move on to presentation. (inaudible) We (inaudible) presentation (inaudible).
Good evening. Does the microphone work?
It's not.
Okay. Okay, so I'm also here with Gary Lynn, CVP of Operations for the Y. We worked with a company out of Omaha for several years, small market. (inaudible) new Ys, existing Ys, qualitative and quantitative study. It really digs into deep and (inaudible). We get information, operating standard, make sure facility is going to be sustainable. So YMCA brought we see research group again into take a look at the community. And I'm going to take you through some slides, a small bunch of shoes. But if there's questions that go along, we'll try and answer those. The feasibility study really does take a deep dive into services and there were several items that we asked for the objectives to be (inaudible). That's where they are. So the first one is just the market penetration for like service providers. Wanted to understand what is in the market already, what other for profit or not profit that are out there that would do similar programs and services to the Y. New services, senior services, but for the population, manage population market area. We also wanted to take a look at the usage of Green Valley Community Center as well as the outdoor water venue, just to see how many people do that. Thoughts? The next part was utilization of the new community center slash YMCA to include what type of membership types people would be interested in and what prices that they also pay to have some of those amenities, facilities, which was the next part. How important those unique amenities and for the features that have been in that facility that we determine if they would pay for it. Demand for programs and services, important use of medically based programs. We have partnered as the Y with several medical and for healthcare industry systems across the metro and brought them in to create a healthy pathway, a healthy lifestyle pathway for those medical service providers, programs and services that are a little more traditional and non-traditional from a chronic disease management of (inaudible). Answer survivorship, some of those types of programs that we've been able to partner. Want to find out the interest on that. And then more importantly, maybe to the community center and the community, what would be the support funding the development of this project based on no taxing, this plan discussed? So we threw that all out there and let's kind of run through that. So this was done and we just got this back about two weeks ago. I'm sure it was (inaudible) at a high level. But if you look at the area that we surveyed and studying methodology, you can see on this document the different towns, zip codes that we looked at, worked with the city to determine the boundaries of the zip codes because it's going to take more than just Green Valley proper to deliver an operating performa in an operating facility that is sustainable. So it's going to take a reach into Blue Springs, it's going to take a reach north to Buckner, it's going to take a reach into Summit, Pro, Dessa. And some of the, as you're aware, we have a facility, once you have a facility in the Springs, we were making that reach all the way out to Dessa and Opro as far as north as Buckner and down south as you work from big cities. So we, we looked at this range and it looks like the population of household count that we were testing in this market study was right around forty-eight thousand, excuse households, excuse households in this town. Of that specifically, Green Valley represented seventeen percent of the town. And our goal was to find three hundred households to make a representative servant. So we didn't test everybody, we didn't test all forty-eight thousand, but from a statistically valid survey, if we were able to hit that three hundred number and ask and look at the household, did reach match the population demographics of this community, we landed within a ninety-five percent standard error range, which means that if you did this, this survey ten times or a hundred times, let's make it a hundred times, ninety-five times out of that hundred times, same percentage. So we feel like it's a very statistically valid survey information. So let's get to some of that. Sample characteristics, I mean, you could look at the male, female population, the age ranges, they're all within the demographic area of population sample. The household income is pretty balanced. If you look over under, on the lower right-hand side, there says children under eighteen household. Want to make sure the representative sample because this is more than just individuals, this is for seniors, youth, this is about families as well. Want to make sure that the number of the population did that target. And we did achieve that. Roughly the national average is about forty percent of households. So this is just sample characteristics and data. This slide shows that first question that we were asking, what is in the market and where do people have, based upon different characteristics, whether it's age or income, children or non-children, who already has something they're connected to in a fitness center, light service provider. Out of that sample, forty-six percent said they had some representative patient in that market. And you can just kind of look at the difference, but obviously as income goes up, usually there's more visibility to have some type of membership. These are the clubs or fitness center memberships that are in the area. Planet Fitness had thirty-one of the, thirty-one percent of the population that they had a fitness center. Blue Springs Build House came in next, the former Blue Springs YMCA had twelve percent of that population. You can see it was down in the smaller numbers, but for the most part, Planet Fitness, Build House, Blue Springs Y, are all the providers. And then a couple of YMCA dependent ones. The types of memberships we found was very interesting. It was, it was sixty-two percent of the folks had individual membership, it was a family race. Only seventeen percent had two adults and then twenty percent of that population, they had family membership, which was unique. So we feel like there's a market here that is being (inaudible) maybe not from the family perspective, which is this is YMCA, this is truly a family. We did ask the question because we felt it would have impact upon, so those big surveys understood that YMCA, this brings it close, we felt like we needed to be upfront with that so we could get the right answers. So most people do the YMCA. This question asks, what would your likelihood of use in new YMCA with Green Valley Pendle? And one answer, which tends to be a lot of good answers, quite costly. Next thing, (inaudible). Where's that location? Then it gets into activities, programs, when it's offered, time that it's open, and just different in strength of types of classes, programs, (inaudible). But obviously price, (inaudible). So we wanted to find out, because in the discussion with the architects, city designing, question has come out about indoor and outdoor. And with the city already having the outdoor aquatics venue, did it make sense to duplicate that new (inaudible)? The top group definitely wouldn't probably, which is where we really try to benchmark where our answers should come from. And there's really not a difference that the community said if you built an indoor and an outdoor or if you just built indoor pool. There's not much difference in the answer. So we felt very comfortable at this point saying that it's not necessary to build a new outdoor pool. It's time to, obviously, have (inaudible) maybe down the road. Right now, the results of the survey in this community center are definitely equal to (inaudible). Of course, whether you build the indoor pool with an outdoor, you get the same answers. People felt very comfortable stating that indoor pool is (inaudible). Important to features and amenities. So cardio equipment, indoor, indoor pool, obviously except the top walking track. It did, this is going to come back. People, you know, because we went down a list, even though before I just said it didn't make a difference on the outdoor pool, you know, part of this, it still ended up in a poor place. So y'all see there's a slash there, maybe it's an outdoor spray park, which is quite costly to start. Weights, indoor therapy pool, free weights, gymnasium, lazy river, which I know is some interest in the community. Hits right in the middle. You'll see the rest of these items that are not indoor, drop-in childcare, youth fitness area, sun and steam. And then at the bottom, a climbing wall, which is why I found that question. So likely to use those programs and services here. I'm sure you'd be able to see at the top, lazy river. And then obviously some of these other programs that are pretty traditional, some unique ones like nutrition and health, (inaudible) community center space, there could be some type of demonstration or teaching kitchen would be great. Obviously indoor lap swimming, group exercises, water exercise, and some specific programs for special potential in the middle. And then as you go down toward the bottom, competitive swimming, this is quite good at the bottom, but that's interesting conversations with schools about lap, to use that traveling. These are youth serving programs. We asked questions about drop-in childcare or drop-in nursery based, adults that have kids, drop the kids off, yeah, youth swim lessons, youth sports leagues, YMCA. That's a long history of serving the community of kids, those two areas, and then to exercise classes. Team leadership, (inaudible). When it came down to asking what best fit type of membership somebody would like to have, what fits their household, their individual, family, this chart breaks that out. Overall, two hundred eighty people answered. And the majority, two adults with children, is that light blue one, you know, the right of center on the top, bar graph, two adults would be one left. So it does come back here that the family component, two adults, children, household, would be a strong factor. It's just opposite what we found. Opposite, it just does support those early memberships, average (inaudible). They are looking to figure out a place for your family. And then when we start to build an operating form, we start to build financial model out to figure out if this thing is sustainable. This is where we start taking the data, cross-reference. So we really look at the definitely and probably would category, (inaudible) bar across the board. We pull the data out and say, these people, these membership types that serve great would pay for these amenities. Would really use that bar, some accounts that are across there. You can see that people that are definitely or probably would have an interest in using this facility if their family household fit that. Forty, almost fifty percent of those (inaudible). This is the pricing model that shows the elasticity, variable price rates, each one of those types. And we use this to get kind of a benchmark on where the community sits on that. So just for example, on the top one, it says one adult went from a single adult membership of forty-nine or fifty-nine dollars. You see it stretches with bar across the graph, that shows that it is very priced in that ten dollar range. While as you drop down to two adults or two adults with children, which is a little too graph, where it's becoming more of a vertical diagonal between top rate and the lower rate we tested. So just shows you just different categories of membership. Like if these are, I'll take these as locked-in rates, this is (inaudible). But it does give a range for each one of those. We also wanted to ask about medically based programs, as you mentioned, partnerships with healthcare provider, community. And the one that's got the box around it, what it tells you is that if a physician were to recommend some type of program or service that was offered at a community center, you'd be going likely to take. And if you take the first group, definitely would, probably would, (inaudible). And combine those, you're, you're in the forty-nine, almost fifty percent range with new add, but physician, medical provider prescribe some program, (inaudible). Medical based, that's some criteria positions. There were some of the pricing questions, obviously, pricing of the likelihood. We also asked a question, as we know, there are several buildings, service areas, city is looking at (inaudible) city hall, police department, and this community center. So we asked that question, how would they rank on a scale of one to ten, importance of these facilities in that order? And the community center with indoor pools, indoor pool was the top pick out of all those with fifty-four percent population services are top choice. A new outdoor swimming pool that whether detached or not, came at second amenity. Police department came in at right around thirty-five percent, (inaudible). The new city hall came in at about seven percent. Had the need of replacing, the city built (inaudible). We also asked a question about supporting this no tax increase question. And the vote came back that eight percent (inaudible). Yes, five percent have decided. So where do we go from here? Lot of data, fifteen, twenty more slides, but I'm happy I didn't have syrup. But what we're going to do now is take this data and try to build a financial model over a five-year period that allows us to figure out how this, this, this community center would operate. And we will use the moderate, middle of population pricing point and look at a moderate estimate. Don't want to be over conservative, but at the same time, don't want to be aggressive. So we'll look right down the middle on this, felt it was solid, good numbers, represented other centers, (inaudible) already operate. So out of all those people that we talked about, really going to focus in on forty percent of the people that (inaudible) about pricing model, definite about amenity model, and then only five percent of the property. So we're really taking even a more moderate to conservative percentage of the population to actually answer the question. Taking everybody that, yes, definitely, if we count the hundred percent. We're going to take the midpoint price, start to work with that. We will look at a resident discount, those that are Green Valley residents, we'll ensure there is some discount for, for that group. The total number of membership units that we're looking at across those six areas of (inaudible) around this year, that's what the survey, that's what the survey has come back to. At this price, these amenities, we believe that achieved sixteen hundred and two billion. That could be anything, that family component or that household component, two adults, or it could be an individual, roughly somewhere in there, that's, that's probably four thousand five million. Definitely (inaudible). It'll take two-year ramp up to get to that six million. It's gone all walk-in doors for today, so there's got to be sustainable funds at all to get to operate here. There is some operating dollars that need to be driven and planned according to that two-year ramp up. There are some exempt directors and some part-time associates that are part of this, board directors that manage different program areas, roughly in that eighty to ninety people that are working part-time, program areas as well. The base, the base building that we looked at sat in the city on (inaudible). I'm getting into details of the size of this. There's a base option that we're looking at, that's at that forty-two, looking at a third option that creates two pool (inaudible). Base option would be this one, leisure pool, two warm water lap lanes in it, it's all one body of water, just a start, it's just a base. If we were to look at the next option, and a leisure pool with more options in it, four lap lanes that are separate, different temperature bodies of water, (inaudible). It adds about thirty-six hundred square. So you're roughly a little bit more in construction, this is the concept that SAP has produced. We'll take all, we'll take both of those options and put the operating work, staff with the (inaudible) box, and we'll build a model that shows what's possible. The membership base, rates, revenues, not only membership program revenue, social capital revenues and contributions is why we're, we're an operator that looks at how to provide scholarships for the (inaudible). So that's a lot of information. I'm here to answer questions and if I can't answer, I'm sure Gary can.
I just wanted to point out too, that those pools you saw weren't designed in any format, those are just generic, kind of (inaudible). Questions come up quite a bit.
I can point to that gentleman right back there, that's been, that's been passionate work of his, (inaudible). I think the closest one, it's a little bit smaller than this one, it's been very successful. We rewind, it's probably thirty pieces (inaudible). It doesn't have two bodies of water, it's had that one body. But it's been in operation since 2006, very similar, and it created certain (inaudible). Both of my very first (inaudible). I think one that reminds me of what we're seeing, it kind of go back two years ago, but just because they're on the cusp of, of the metro, (inaudible) and part of the school district there, and built roughly forty-two thousand, forty-five thousand, if they built it, it would be optimal. But it has, had the two, been very successful, partnered with the school district, offer swim lessons to all the secondary (inaudible). It's built on a very similar. I'm trying to say with the size measure. The original Flat County, (inaudible), Flat City partnership by county built, started out at about thirty thousand, somewhat similar, but within the first few years, the population had grown so much, it's actually very similar trend to the size of the metro, that we actually had to double the size. actually very similar trend to the size of the metro, that we actually had to double the size of the school. So it was roughly seventy-five. It's got an extremely large head, wide, state length, but, I'm not sure. But been extremely successful. It took a while for it to break, but after ten years. We've got some other studies around the market area, and I know I've shared it. The market study, I think we did, very similar results. Unity of rise, less than it is usually a bit, looking for what's next. Recreation, as well as a service program. So we had, it's a, it's a pretty unique facility. We have several lies that partnership land was donated, and the YCA sat on the screen, the school district property. Been around the street south, there's been quite a bit of growth down south, camps there in compassing work. We've been working in these areas a lot, knowing we couldn't grow off the land lot. And if we were going to continue to improve our services programs, our goal would be to make it there. There was just nowhere to go. And at the same time, the school district, here are a couple of the programming teams, there's one team on this, this one, south one, swim there. It just makes sense, the times are right, we've been there for twenty years, and the opportunities are, I think, have solved, but not, they were trying. Doesn't mean that we haven't been looking for some, 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 some great fit for us, from a, from a metro perspective. If you were to, um, services. So when we started the process, the other, like, price, like, that would be provided earlier, that brought the project, right, I guess, you know, you, so, it's kind of already, so, the next stage, I'm not being, and I think, one other question that was there, this was, maybe if there was some out, it was, it was changing.
I guess, the vibe works here, but like, talk about the separate pool water pool, that for your, and swimmers, because they would have swam in pool water.
It was just about an eight, nine, it was just.
Like, high school swim team, that's why you have to have it.
Body feels, sure or not, due to my self, that body feels about three quarters, three to four. Cool, that pool, it just doesn't act like well, the progress of the surface. Kid in the swim, kid, turn blue in the water, try to swim. It is not, it's not fun, but, but, you know, a one-water pool with zero entry, play features, you know, family oriented, that's, that's the primary push. And then, you know, how does it, how does it work from a lap? One, initially, it's incorporated same body of water, so the lap lane is pretty warm, that's what we're doing, most traditional competitors. So how do, how do you push up construction cost, uh, construction? Maybe cost that they, uh, got, the guarding, work, salaries, I can't express this, but we need to be some offset, uh, so. So it is a form, like the first one that was shot. This, this, this would struggle to be a competitive, uh, sort of, probably, six? Start getting six, six lap lanes, separate block groups. Well, north and five, six.
Next one is, next one, what they said is a public hearing, we, this was a, like, a conference.
So before I start the staff report, in your packet, this is towards the back of the Board of Alderman agenda item, there's an aerial map, it kind of shows you the property. And I'll be referring to this aerial map and describing the tracks as we go through the staff report. The applicant is SPKA LLC, doing business as Metropolitan Concrete Recycling. They're requesting a conditional use permit for a period of ten years to operate a concrete crush recycling facility on approximately fourteen point three acres. It's generally located at the northeast corner of McQuary and Seymour Roads. What they're basically wanting to do is to allow concrete material to be lifted to the site, so that a crusher would crush material two or three times per year, depending upon the amount of material received. The concrete that is delivered to the site will be crushed into base rock and various sizes of clean rock. The metal or rebar found in the material is collected and transported then to a recycling facility. The crushed rock would be sold to the public. This type of crushed rock that would be created would be to play use for roads, driveways, and other construction needs. The proposed land use is found under the city's code of ordinances under conditional use section four hundred point two four oh. It basically talks about the crushing or washing, storage of stone, gravel, or similar materials that's allowed by conditional use for a limited time, period not to exceed ten years. And it's also subject to any regulations or restrictions or conditions that are recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then prescribed in ordinance by the Board of Alderman. Now, the fourteen point three acres is comprised of two tracks. So the first track, Track One, which is right at the corner of McQuary and Seymour Road, is Zone District M1, light industrial, approximately two point eight acres in size, it's platted at Lot One, it's NiBar Industrial Park subdivision. There are three buildings on this track. There's, the Summit Trucking and Legacy Iron LLC operates their business in regards to on this track. They sell, buy, and trade heavy equipment, heavy construction equipment, trucks, trailers, and agricultural equipment. Now, Track Two, which is this track that's outlined in green, it's Zone District Day Agricultural, and it's approximately eleven point five acres in size. The property has not been platted, and there's one building on the track. Regarding the surrounding land uses, the property to the north and east are undeveloped. You have Interstate Seventy to the south of the property, and to the west, you have property that is Zone District M1, owned by the City Service Gas Company, and then to the north and west of that property is the Creekside Residential PUD. The notice of this public hearing was given in the examiner and by letter to the property owners of record within a hundred and eighty-five feet of the applicant's property. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November twentieth. The commission, by a vote of five to zero, recommended approval of the conditional use permit to operate the concrete crushing and recycling facility, subject to strict conditions. Those conditions are, one, that the conditional use permit will expire ten years from the date of the Board of Alderman ordinance, and that ten years is prescribed in the county's or in the city's zoning ordinance. Two, the crushing of concrete shall only occur during the week, Monday through Friday, and during the hours of seven AM, four PM. Three, the ingress and egress access for trucks delivering concrete material to be crushed or hauling crushed rock from site shall be from the drive east of McQuary Road. Seymour Road should be, should not be used. So as you can look at the map, there's an ingress, egress, drive, that would be utilized by those trucks off of McQuary Road. So the intent is not to use Seymour Road as far as the trucks coming and going on the delivery and hauling of material. Four, the stockpiling material and crushing of rock shall only occur on Track Two, as described in Exhibit A of the application. And five, the stockpiling of material and crushing of rock on Track Two shall be no closer than one hundred feet from all property lines of Track Two, as described in Exhibit A to the application. So the one hundred foot from it, looking at the aerial, if you look within the green area of Track Two, the blue interior line, it basically shows you the one hundred foot setback. The intent of that is to provide a buffer from where the crushing of material will be, where the raw materials are hauled in, as well as the actual crusher operating within the property. And six, is to control the dust. Spray bars shall always be located on the inlet and outlet of the crusher, and operating when pressure is being used. So that is the staff report, and if there's any questions, we want to have to answer. Yes. And the applicant and legal counsel is here, and they'd be more happy to answer any questions as well.
No, we, we agree with the tenure and the staff recommendations and the exceptions or conditions that they want us to do, so, I wish you guys have any questions, we're happy with.
So the public hearing, does anyone who wishes to speak for, or, uh, project, they have a vote?
Mayor, this is a resolution.
I've got some other, this is a review, this is R nineteen, Japs forty-eight.
Mayor, this is a court, this is a final document, I've heard the presentation on the last.
Agent, all fair, please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, I'm looking for a resolution.
This is a proof resolution, R nineteen, Japs forty-nine, grab a second.
No, we can try to make some more phone calls. It does get to a point where you try to accurately account for the receivables that you have in the work. And as Mr. Murphy said, it includes previous years for uncollected water and sewer accounts that have been sent to collections or declared in bankruptcies. So mostly individuals, I assume, have most moved on from the city and didn't pay their final bill. If they do come back, there have been occasions where we have collected some of those past due bills, but in our system, it will show where it is written off, but we can occasionally get some of them.
So if they, so if they come back, you know, it's written off, we still, they still pay that, or go back up?
We do, yeah, we try to make sure that their bills are paid when they come back and try to collect that, but most likely, the majority of this will be written off as. It's thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-eight cents. There's a wide range, we could, are you talking about the average bill for the bad debt? I'd have to go back and look at those calculations, but we can certainly follow up with that. It's mainly residential, but I do believe there are some commercial in there. Again, I'd need to look at some of the accounts. They just list the account numbers in the reservation.
Agent, all fair, please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, I'm looking for a resolution, R nineteen, Japs fifty, grab a second?
Any discussion?
Mayor, it comes from the board, and I should know, please, very badly, we're here in the midst of, sorry, last year, question. We decided to have, help my, have the, the city, do, uh, do, uh, do, do, uh, 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 do, uh,
Please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, I move we approve the resolution.
I put some other things through, which are 19 gas 51. Grab a second. Need assistance?
Mayor, this is a board, this best during budget time. Where we never see a grant to a tax pay, turn of the program, uh, next phase for the bridge. That's what you have. Action. But maybe, uh, uh, they're, you know, they're talking.
All both same time?
Mayor, I move we approve the resolution.
I put some other things through, which are 19 gas 52. Grab a second. Session.
Mayor, members of the board, this resolution allows us to move into Phase 2 of the community campus project. We have Mike Keely here from Helix representing our architect for, basically what we're looking to do at this point is move into schematic design for the project, which would include the general design of rendering so we can go to the public with a little more clearer picture of what they would be voting on in April. So this resolution allows us to move into that schematic design phase at about 25% of the full schematic design. That will get us through the spring, up to the election, and then should we be in the position where that bond measure passes, we will then move forward with the rest of the schematic design process and then into construction documents. This just allows us to start that process where we're not talking as generic buildings anymore, but starting to get some more conceptual pictures and ideas of what the floor plans look like and the materials used.
I believe on our schedule, we have up to two meetings set before April, so ideally we'll have a couple of touch points, whether they're big forums or, you know, more smaller events like we've done, you know, with the three or four of those leading up to the master met to approve. There will be more touch points.
Please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, I move we approve the resolution.
I put some other things through, which are 19 gas 3. Grab a second. Need assistance?
Mayor, this is a board, this resolution is a recent last, so it's not, uh, the resolution. Uh, proper procedure, direction, uh, legal team, uh, going to a budget, uh, uh, which has qualified, uh, an Australian resolution. So this resolution is, is, I'm saying, is B 4, a budget in that, and then to be end of year, but it is, uh, act, uh, because, uh, this is, uh, this is.
Yeah, so in this, at the end of the day, we're very, very close, which is obviously sort of. This is very, uh, uh, probably.
The majority of line items are the same. We did have a developer payment out in the TIP district, so we had several changes within some of the tentative districts. We did have a little bit of change in the debt service fund. If you remember, we did the depeasants earlier this year, and we had some expense costs associated with the debt issuance of that. Advice and help from legal counsel, bond counsel, and the financial advisor for the city, but overall, things seem to be trending in line, and the majority of the revenues and expenditures are similar to what we started off or include the changes and amendments that were made throughout the year.
And those thoughts are a packet. Please. Please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, I move we approve the resolution.
I put some other things through, which are 19 gas 31. Grab a second. Please, need assistance? Please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, this is Bill B 19-31, an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement between the City of Grain Valley, Missouri, and the Village of Grain Valley Community District.
Mayor, I move please, uh, second reading.
I put some other things through, which are 19 gas 31. Make it 2483. Grab a second. All both same time? Grab a second. Grab a second. Please say aye.
Mayor, that ordinance is approved 6-0.
Please say aye. All both same time? Please say aye. All both same time?
Mayor, this is Bill B 19-32, an ordinance amending Section 340.190 to update the designation of emergency routes within the city.
Mayor, I move we, uh, 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 No, this would be a motion to accept the second reading because we just had it and then approve it as a ordinance. Mayor, that ordinance is approved, six-zero.
Thank you.
Correct. Yeah, so you, so just procedurally, you just had the first reading. Normally, we would say, I would approve the first reading and bring it back for our next meeting. You can say, you could say, bring it back at the next meeting, or you could say, bring it back immediately for the second reading. But then, once that is approved, then we have that second reading at that point. Otherwise, we would have just moved on and brought it back at the second meeting. So we'll have an opportunity to practice it again right now. You guys are doing great. Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-five, an ordinance amending the budget of the City of Grain Valley, Missouri for the fiscal year 2019. Mayor, this is the second reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-five, an ordinance amending the budget of the City of Grain Valley, Missouri for the fiscal year 2019. Mayor, that ordinance is approved, six-zero.
So the purpose of this request is to gain final plat approval for this phase of the Eagle Ridge Estates. Give you a little background, this property that's before you is approximately 9.138% size. Property is generally located east of northwest Eagle Ridge Drive and north of northwest east Kansas City Industrial Boulevard. Land is owned District R2 duplex residential. Board of Alderman rezoned this property by ordinance 2268 on December 3rd, 2012, from District M1 line industrial to R2. This is the second phase of Eagle Ridge multifamily. This is the final phase of Eagle Ridge multifamily. The developer chose to divide the subdivision into two phases. Final plat Phase One was reported on October 28th, 2014. So this final plat will extend those streets within that subdivision, taking 34 duplex plots. The final plat pays any performance with city standards and engineering civil plans, and they have been approved by the city engineer. The had the November 20th, 2019 meeting, mighty zoning commission recommended approval. The only thing I would add, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it would be appropriate, since you don't have a second meeting in December, is it possible to have the first and second reading of this one as the following two items on the agenda to approve?
I mean, you have it on the agenda for consideration, so I don't know off the top of my head your procedural requirements on that, but if the board is okay with it, you can move to bring it up this evening if you'd like. And the developers- You guys killed that last one. You might have two rows.
The developer's representative is in the audience, if you have any questions regarding-
Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-six, an ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Ridge multifamily, second plat. Mayor, this is the second reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-six, an ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Ridge multifamily, second plat. Mayor, that ordinance is approved, six-zero. Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-seven, an ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Ridge Estates, third plat. Mayor, this is the second reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-seven, an ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Ridge Estates, third plat. Mayor, that ordinance is approved, six-zero.
Sure. So basically, we have started a pile, and what we do is we'll generate a pile of concrete tear-out asphalt and stuff like that, and then we will move a portable plant in, crush what's there. It may take us two weeks to a month to crush what's possibly there into a pile, and then we would move out and go to another location that we operate. And so we may not move in until all that material is sold, or we have more to crush. So we may crush once a year, we may crush twice a year, but most of the time, it would be just a pile of crushed material there to sell, or just be bringing in material. So as far as dust, noise, all that, it would only be typically when we're there, and that will take us forever to crush it.
Plank and zoning addressed noise?
Yes.
Yes, so they talked about noise. The operation of the crusher is off of the generator. I can let the applicant speak to it as well, but the plank and zoning commission addressed it, and the result was it's operated off the generator. You can take into consideration the noise of I-70, where this is adjacent to, you're more likely not even hear the generator crushing operation.
So it won't exceed I-70s?
No.
Well, also, we're restricted on the times when we get crushed from southern as well. And you've got trucks and school buses running around there, it's going to allow it from the generator anywhere on the scene. I don't think it's going to be an issue.
So besides the time, it's also the Monday through Friday, no crushing dirt on a weekend.
Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B-19 dash thirty-eight, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a concrete crushing and recycling facility. Mayor, that ordinance is approved, six-zero. Mayor, Board, just a couple of quick items. First, wish everybody happy holidays. Obviously, we just wrapped up the business for the year with most of that, so I also did want to pass along to yourselves and to city staff. We do close our offices each year for both the 24th and 25th of December, and also the 31st of December and the 1st of January. So we'll have a couple of days out at that point, so just so everybody knows, if you're trying to get ahold of us, still can get ahold of us on our cell phone and all that. We're always available.
Like 12:01 on New Year's Eve, that's a part of legal problem arises.
Yeah, I hope I feel awake, actually, so. It unfortunately does happen from time to time.
Mayor and Board, just wanted to thank everyone who assisted this past Thursday night at our annual Mayor's tree lighting and holiday festival. We believe it was another successful evening. The weather was great comparatively to some of the years in the past where it's been pretty cold. But everything went well, we had a great turnout. I just want to thank all of you. I know all of you all were out there either participating in the festivities or volunteering your time. We had employees from all departments there getting everything set up during the event and getting things torn down afterwards. Want to thank the PIPs for their assistance with traffic control. Already start, started planning for next year.
So, this, uh, we're all recording for the public? Okay.
I was gonna, I thought what you said, and, and also telling you, and, uh, I thought it was great, and I had a lot of fun, and, uh, all of a sudden, you know?
Or cotton?
Yes, I would like to say, uh, I have a good one, that she was telling me, and, like, my stepmother, she knew better, and, uh, so, she called, uh, my stepmother, she had my new kids, so, that's going on, you know, you're franked out, they could have
Are you guys still drinking hot chocolate?
We, we, we did all right in the hot chocolate department. We, we returned what we didn't use, so.
Always leader? Next up, Mayor's Sports.
Well, I'm just gonna give a, for lack of a better term, shout-out, because top shit was, uh, it was really good, so, that was, I just wanted, you know, to thank her, uh, you know, I know we're, you know, we're developing, I had, you know, I had kind of called some residents who were like, hey, we'd like to be, um, this place, like, people, places in Valley, and, uh, with her texts, like, this is a good day, I was looking at this, and she's already got her, these calls, this company, uh, like, share something to the pipe staff, so, I just, uh, just, uh, right on that, and, uh, other part is, last time we fixed it, last time we did, so, somebody looked at New Year's Eve, so, I think last year's got, they do, we closed in June on New Year's Eve, but there's no, sort of like, our building there, so, I'll bring that, we closed, or, or, right?
None that I'm aware of. Uh, I don't think that's going to be the priority for a lot of people.
(inaudible) drop it off, yeah, (inaudible) drops off the box, if, if we get it, but, that is, it's not going to, there.
Yeah, we can extend the, if we
Uh, so, you discussed it for motions on that, if, if you last year, we did, or, to, Did, maybe, I guess, I got those over cotton, and she closed, you know, that June on the eve, is that a, is that, is that, is that? All you guys do is go, man, it's, uh, the wall, I mean, so, man, mine, so, you just, that's a wall, right? I think that's how it works, I don't know, it's been a long time since I've had one. Why do you even take it off the hook, you know, this, this, this? Well, you know, some of this will come by your house.
Thank you.
Well, then, turn all lights off, yeah? For the time, it says, closed in twenty twenty. All right, so, just, all fair, you say, I, all those, they sign, great? We have this, uh, one, three, one, three, well, all right, Mayor, that motion is determined, that, uh, (inaudible), on West, in the session, all right, (inaudible), on the chat, on the top, on the back, you know, (inaudible), on the West, on the East, yeah, all right, that's